Roll call. I show everybody here but Julie Stoffer is not here, George Knoll is not here, and Derek Jones is being replaced by Brett Jones tonight. And Candy Weller is taking Lisa's spot tonight. Stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of October 4th, 2017, regular session. Any additions or corrections?
I move to accept the minutes for October 4th, 2017.
Second. Motion second to accept the minutes for October 4th, 2017, regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input. Let it hurt, moving on. Marshall County Economic Development Corporation Monthly Report.
Call me off, sir. The Argus site proposal project was from IEDC. They sent a proposal, or a proposal was sent to Columbus, Indiana, on product development. Real estate discussion was a real estate discussion with Nathan Johns. On the Argus Manufacturing Center, sorry. Signed, the agreement was signed with RDA and MCEDC. Money's been put to RDA, so the $400,000 is up there waiting for us to use it. And the nice thing was, we found out that RDA should've had MCEDC sign a mortgage agreement or something, which they didn't do. So as long as we want to be honest, we give them the $400,000 back. Technically, there's, we messed up on that one. Site design was completed, sent, and that should be here the way I understand it tomorrow. We'll see. Country Development for the Future, we did that. That, and the next one is November the 15th. Don't forget to tell Jamie. Internal Communications, he was at the Argus Town Council September 20th. Talked to Enzlys about the easement for the railroad access. And went also to the NDOT public hearing for the infamous J turns. Our last MCEDC meeting, the priority is, will be, the Argus Shell Building. And that's the only thing that we're actually presenting any leads to. So we're not going to deal with any of the other shell buildings until Argus is filled. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, under Old Business. Listen to Chuck from Marshall County Buildings. Listen to me?
As you know, we did get a court order and went into 405 South Michigan Street to look at the interior of that building. The fear was that it was becoming more and more dilapidated and was in, going to be as bad inside as it was outside. The good news was, the inside is in better shape than we anticipated. The bad news is, the outside roof in particular still needs work. The letter that you have before you is one that if you approve, I would go ahead and send to the owners of that property. You know, while we were there, I spoke to him about the roof, all the holes, the locations, and the shape that it was in. The water entering the building, the plywood that was deteriorating and roof leaks. Water did, has been penetrating, you can see where it's come in. It's deteriorated. The ceiling that's been in there, the insulation, and it's all mostly fallen down inside the building. And the floors inside show signs of staining water. I would suggest, that is my opinion, that without proper maintenance, then the building will continue to deteriorate and be past the point of repair and will need to be demolished. That's my opinion. It's only a matter of time, and it will be there sooner than we think. My recommendations to the Drudges would be, the following steps to be taken. Have the roof professionally removed and replaced. Remove and replace all damaged plywood and rafters that are inside there. Remove the peeling paint and repaint the entire building. Remove all of the damage and debris from the inside of the building. Now, I will say that since the first letter that Mr. Jones sent to him, they did clean up the outside. The old tires that had been there for years and years, and a lot of the other trash that was back behind it, they did get that cleaned out and taken care of, so they have made some progress. I don't believe at this point that we have a tool or mechanism that can force them to do anything. But if we give them these recommendations, they don't do that or take care of it, then we can move forward at a later time. So, do you have any questions?
You say timely manner. What do we consider in a timely manner? A year, less than a year?
Because this is my opinion, and we're suggesting and encouraging him to do this, that I put a timely manner because that's the best.
That's the best. We really can't give him?
No.
100 days to do it?
No, because he doesn't have to do this. He does not have to do any of this. Because the building is not, it's not as bad as the one we tore down.
Right.
So if it's not at that point, then we can't make him do anything. So what it's saying, a timely manner, just puts him on notice that, you know, we'll continue to watch and monitor if he doesn't get it done. So, that's all that I think we can do at this point. Any other questions? Just for note to the record. 505 North Maple Street is a property that we've been working on and trying to track down who owns it. I've spoken to the real estate agent. I let them know that the problems that we have there and the items that need to be taken care of. The kitchen floor is rotted, it has a hole probably eight foot by eight foot, all the way to the basement. The southeast, or southwest bedroom has the floor rotted through, all the way down to the ground. The roof is leaking in many places. So if they sell it, whether they try to sell it on a short sale, or buyer sale, give it away, or whatever, the items that I've outlined to them are going to have to be taken care of by the next owner. We'll move forward with that one also. Any questions about that one?
So what is the exact status of that right now?
It's, they have, the real estate agent is working with new owners since we first started. They're now new owners, and so the real estate agent is working with them on deciding what they want to do with them. And so that'll be ongoing for a while. There's another one, I'm sorry, I don't have the address, on the other side of Maple, North Maple Street. And Jamie and I have been working on that with the electrical for about, I don't know, nine months or a year. You know which one I'm talking about, Candy?
Oh, is that?
Brown House.
Is that Norris's?
Yeah, so they, they had a...
I think like 518?
And maybe, you guys are probably right. It's on the other side. They had an extension cord or a welding cord that came out of their meter base and ran back around to their panel, and a lot of other things that were going on. We stopped that once the power was turned off. They have done some upgrades, but not to code, so we're not turning that back on or allowing anybody to live there until it's brought up to code, as far as the electrical goes. And in speaking about the 405 South Michigan, we have another property that is similar to that. Appears to be an old gas station, service station, or something at 198 South Michigan Street.
Crossed tracks?
No. It's the first one.
By the V M.
Oh, right by the V R.
Oh, yeah.
And the outside of it looks worse than 405, to be honest with you. But it's your pleasure, whatever you want to do with that. Maybe a letter encouraging them to do some maintenance on the outside and get that fixed up. The owners are?
Same students.
JT Enterprises from Mission, Waukegan. Okay? And then there's another one that's across the street to 101 South Michigan. There has been some cleaned up around there, but the building is peeling and falling apart there too, so it's similar shape to the other two buildings. And that's owned by Seth Overmeyer. So, it's your pleasure, whatever you guys want to do with those two, but they'll be continuing to go downhill if we don't. We should try to encourage them to do some cleaning, straight.
I know at 198, I walk by frequently, there's a dumpster. And often, there's broken glass outside of the dumpster, trash on the ground around it. We don't always...
Do they use the building at all?
Not to my knowledge. But the dumpster is used for, for someone. The dumpster is used.
So that's my report on unsafe some, where we're at on each other. So if you have any questions, let me know. And let me know what you want to do with this letter, whether you want to send it. I can send it certified. If that's what you want, if you would choose to have the attorney go through it and send a letter, that's fine with me too. I think the best we can do at this point, we got the stuff outside cleaned up, we can encourage them to get the roof fixed, but I don't think they have any. We did see in there that I said that if they're unable to take care of it, perhaps we should put it up for sale.
On these other buildings, do you have any suggestions?
Well...
Or go next?
I think with 198 and 201 South Michigan, that we send them a letter in explaining the ISO and that sort of thing to them, asking them to try to bring the exterior up to a better condition.
Thank you.
Suzanne, who's the one?
The one? Across the street, the little one. The one that I, the one that I was reading.
Oh. We want him to send a letter. I think we should. And because coming from him, he's still, yeah.
He did the inspection.
Right, right, and it's from the building department, so, yeah. I'll make the motion, we have Chuck DeWitt, County Building Commissioner, send a letter to Mr. and Mrs. Drudge, certified male, concerning his building and what should be done to take care of it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, that we have Chuck DeWitt, County Building Commissioner, send this letter recommending what needs to be done to their building, a timely manner to Randy and Cindy Roach. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we want to address these other two? I would like to.
Yeah, we keep letting stuff sit, it's just going to, yeah. So whatever you want to do, Suzanne, come up with a good plan, let's do it.
You suggested a letter, just putting them on notice?
Yeah, put them on notice, I think it's the first step, and, you know, hopefully we get good cooperation and have it taken care of.
I move that Chuck send a letter to 198 South Michigan and, is it 201?
201.
201 South Michigan.
Second. A motion and a second to have Chuck DeWitt send letters to 198 South Michigan and 201 South Michigan to put them on notice to clean up their properties. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Board openings, Marshall County Tourism and the Planning Commission. If you're interested, submit a letter to Lisa, the Court Treasurer. Fire contract agreement. Township's had their meetings and voted on the agreements. Fire services, the paper.
Is this something we have to do on three times agreed, that we need?
This is just an agreement.
So we just need a motion to accept it?
Yeah, I don't think that we need, we don't need, yeah, we just need a motion for that, right, and then second?
Yes. Okay, well, I'll make a motion that Town of Argus accepts the township fire services agreement, as it is written.
Is this the township we're talking?
This is the fire services agreement between...
Well, it says township fire services agreement on top of the paper that I've got.
You have three different agreements. There's three of them. You need to have a fire services agreement. Or the fire, well, yeah, fire services. Say prior, your one to the fire department.
It's called the...
Township to the Town of Argus Fire Township Agreement.
Argus Farm, Cleaness, and the Argus Farm Fireman Incorporated. Okay, well, I made a motion that we accept the agreement, fire services agreement, as it is written.
Second.
Second, sure.
I want some discussion.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to accept the Argus Township Fire Services Agreement. Any further discussion?
Yes. I see this goes back to January 1st of this year?
Yes.
For the year of 2017. And also it mentions an annual roster of certified firefighters. Does the town have that?
I don't either, do you? I don't have one either.
So the office does not have that?
I don't think so.
I've given Susan all names and numbers, so they have a list of firemen. It's basically the same one mark gives out all firemen, so...
Is it, is it the same one that's on the back of all the fire runs?
What is it?
Certified list of firefighters?
The roster.
Yes.
Is that what they say, on fire runs?
Roster of certified firefighters. Okay. I do get, on the back of their fire runs, they have a roster listing, so you know who was attending that one. I have that list, but I usually give those back to you.
Yes.
So, so actually you do need a regular list? Probably would be, if you have the, wrong. And you gave me a physical list this year.
It's the same thing, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Employee appreciation dinner.
Do you, do you need to give the other chairmans as well?
We'll look.
Well, Randy obviously saw Natasha one. There should be an EMS...
There is, there's an EMS agreement also.
Yeah, there's an EMS.
EMS service agreement. Because I read this one earlier today.
All right.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the EMS service agreement as it is written.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
And we got a second to accept the Argus EMS Township Agreement. Any further discussion?
Just to mention a roster, is that something that would be good to have?
Yeah.
Because nobody could, yeah, we make sure you get a roster. Mark, make sure you get a roster. Actually, I think there's a roster listed on the website too.
For the EMS, of certified?
All our members are certified. They're not true firefighters until...
Now, this is EMS.
Oh, EMS, yes, there's those. It's on there too.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll go to the fire department's, fire township agreement.
That's the third one. There is one, we make a motion then to accept the township fire services agreement, as it is written.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's all three. Okay, now, employee appreciation dinner. Let's see, got a list. I know that there's Cristo's, there is...
Swan Lake.
Swan Lake. So why don't somebody make a motion, we'll see where it goes.
I move that we use Swan, Cristo's Bank at home.
I'll second that one, yeah.
Friday.
December 8th, on Friday evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Fine, me too. And Julie Stoffer said that date was fine to do, so let's do it, I don't see an answer from her.
We have a motion and a second to do the employee appreciation dinner at Cristo's Bank of Hall on Friday, December 8th. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other old business? All right, we're going to move on to new business. Resolution 2017-11 Power Tracker.
Suzanne just brought this to my attention. It should be a negative amount on that second page. We'll get that corrected.
Who says rate adjustment?
Yep.
It just says, yeah, it doesn't say plus or minus, right.
Got a motion?
I move to accept resolution 2017-11.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second to accept resolution 2017-11 Power Tracker. Any further discussion?
Negative needs to be added to the rate adjustment.
Right. What is the adjustment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're going to back up, says, do you have anything from the attorney report?
Do not.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, it's fine.
Is there any other new business? Chuck.
As some of you know, I do work with Culver. Help them with their planning commission meetings and BZA and other things, and I am pretty close to them. This afternoon, and I don't know how many of you know this, but they got a call from Lieutenant Governor. They were awarded the Stellar Community Grant. That's going to mean somewhere between six to nine million dollars to that community over the next three to four years. And that just got me thinking, of course, I'm excited for them, and you know, there's going to be a lot of things going on down there. But I'm thinking, there's a town of maybe around 1,000 to 1,100 people that put this together. Now, granted, it was a lot of work, they worked on it for two years to get there. The first year they didn't make it, second year they did it. And I know Suzanne has been down at their meetings, and she was at the presentation when they did it. But I'm thinking, why doesn't Argus do this? Why, you know, we talk about getting, you know, some development going in both commercial and residential, we talk about, you know, fixing places up, cleaning it up, making this a better community, and there are a lot of strides being made that way. But I know the town of Culver has said that they will help any other town, any other community in this county with their experience and guidance on how to make this work. You know, I am just bringing this up because I think you should really, really consider this. And right now would be the time to start on next year's application and get going. You know, you can put together, you know, talk to Jonathan down there, anybody else that was on the committee. You have as many or more resources, you have more people, and you have a wider variety of needs to meet and, and things that you can put in your application to help, you know, get that grant. of needs to meet and things that you can put in your application to help, you know, get that grant. If you spend a year and you don't get the grant on the first time, you know, you try it again, the same as they did. You know, you try to make things a little better or more encompassing in their project. I think with Culver, one of the things that it did was make them aware of not only things going on in the community, things that could be done in the community, but it made them all aware of each other, and they worked together as a group. And, you know, you saw it down there, I mean, that was a very good presentation, very good group. And, you know, you can keep either taxing or taking or however you want to look at it from the people here to try to make things move and go, or you can go outside and have other communities help give you what you need here. You know, with this new manufacturing building, you know, you've got the residential site up there going, you know, there's a lot of things that you could point to here. You know, the trailer park is a huge one as far as improvements that the towns made, the park and everything else. I would encourage you to apply for the Stellar Grant and see where it can go for you. That's all.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Jennifer Vanderberg worked with Culver, and she will be here next Tuesday evening. She will... I've been working with her monthly, and she would be more than happy to do this, anything we have. She's at the ABC, I'm to Oprah.
Okay.
It's Tuesday, the 31st?
No.
Because it's supposed to be the 24th.
24th, that's on the...
Oh, it's a long week ahead of ya.
It's the ABC meeting at the next downtown at 7:00. She will be facilitating that as a business, a meeting of businesses in Argus.
Tuesday, if I don't...
Same. But she would probably be willing to meet us before then if she's able. People will talk to us specifically about some things.
What do you think? See what the other guys have to say. To George, any of us off to meet with her?
It's important. I don't think meeting with her anyway. I'll talk to her. I mean, I've been meeting with her on a regular basis for almost a year now.
Sent an email. Yeah. Any other new business? Department head reports, Police Department.
You should have my report, just a couple quick things to highlight. The department had nine criminal arrests for the month of September, 37 traffic arrests, we had five ordinance tickets, took 45 code enforcement actions, had 16 criminal investigations. The only other thing I really have is that I'd like to... Our department is finally kind of almost done with the work they're doing inside. It's really nice, and kind of want to publicly thank Dean Culver, who did it, and his daughter. And they spent so much time there, I start to think they were part of our department. They were outstanding, and did a really good job. And so did Jamie and his guy, they came over to help us with some things, too. Turned out really nice. It was well needed.
Follow up on what you're saying, I've been over there, too, checking. You know, before the building, there was kind of a band-aid fix, get rid of this mold. Well, it didn't work. Well, this time, they took it apart and fixed it right. Now, it still needs a little, there's some stuff that may need to be done, but I tell you, it's probably the best that building, the shape that building's ever been in.
Well, what Jamie did in the beginning of the year with our evidence room helping us with that and the storage and then the new... We used some of that, the entranceways, some of that space there, the lobby, really helped us out a lot, so... Guess I want to thank those guys, they did an awesome job.
Did you pick up all of the people down on the corner of...
On Albert Street?
Yeah, Albert East.
Yes, I sent them a letter that... I'm assuming that guy's an elderly gentleman. I got a thing, an email from his son. It took a while, they moved, so it had been forwarded, and he's taking care of it. And so I had an email conversation with him just the other day, and he's supposedly supposed to take care of it.
Thank you, Clark. Thanks. Utilities? Looks like you guys have Jamie's report. I've got a couple things to add, and if you guys have questions, I'll try my best to answer them. All answering, they just might not be the best standers.
Say, hey, Joe finished up, did and finished up hydrate or flushen today. Sounds like we got a couple files maybe leaking Suzanne found. Tomorrow, we're gonna go out and fix our diffusers and aeration tanks out of the sewer plant, and then probably Friday or Monday, he'll start filling that back up. And by the end of next week, we'll be 100% back online. That job will be 100% completed then for the sewer department. We're waiting on Westler's paperwork back on the drainage for Westview Court. Today, I went out and shot some elevations from our eight-inch drain line we found there. And I found the... Jamie and I harried Doug and then looked for the eight-inch drain that's supposed to go over to Westview Court. We found a drawing that just happened to be tucked away somewhere that nobody knew about. We found it, and we were about three feet shy of where we stopped digging because of the volume of water. Dried up a little more, we were able to get it, we found it. It looks like we have about four and a half foot of slope to work with. So with the numbers, our regular things, we may possibly be able to start at the drain that was put in at Clinton Street. And we may need to get some right-of-way agreements, but it looks like we can drain Clinton Street all the way down to the park, set structures, manholes in Westview Court. Probably take care of that that way. I'll have to get Doug, no, Curtis at the county and make sure we can have that water to there and see if we can get it from them. So, depending on what Westler shows up with and what we do, we are getting the start of a good thing to get rid of some water down there.
Good.
And then the other day, Donnie from Ladies Maycock sent a email out to us. The state has chosen rule, grants again, 80/20 match, town committed 20% match for sidewalk work, ADA sidewalk compliance.
Oh, really?
And Lisa and I, Jamie kind of talked, and if it's all right with you guys, we would like to go ahead and Jamie and I will go through and find... If all we do is just the intersections where we need the curb done and the ADA compliance stuff done and not the straightaways, we can do the whole thing, too, but we thought that would be at least our first. We have till, I think it's November 22nd, to get the paperwork in. Lisa has to go to one or two classes to get some information, but if it's all right with you guys, we'd like to see if we can try for another one, because I know there's money tucked away for sidewalks.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I agree. Hope for the best.
I got a little bit of the drawing here, if anybody wants to see it for the Westview Water thing, so... I'm gonna look at it whenever...
Take down my no fishing sign.
Be less frog in the world, that's for sure.
Right?
That's all I had. And Jamie's hopefully out enjoying vacation. Much needed, wouldn't.
I think.
Do we want a motion on the sidewalk to have them proceed to...
Well, I do agree. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have Doug, Jamie, whoever needs to do it, to start trying to give us a grant to do this ADA sidewalk compliance.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to have Doug, Jamie, Lisa go to class. Everything that needs to be done to get a grant to do the ADA and the 80/20 grant for sidewalk compliance. Right? Think that covers it all?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we went through some alleys up, too, that need to turn back itself. We missed some bodies, let us know.
That's all true now.
Fire EMS.
My report, we did have the truck service. Everything did pass again. Few minor things that we have to fix, all went well. We do have to take Ford, tanker Ford through the shop in St. John's. Service tech wrecked it in the building and hit the building, tore the bumper off, so... I didn't tear it off, we ran it pretty good, so we have to take it, have that replaced. That'll probably be going this week, next week. That's about it.
That's not fault of us.
That doesn't... yeah.
Yeah.
We'd like to say, though, this Friday, on a different note, that Tenerloin Dinner out here at the park for the festival, anybody that needs tickets, we have those. And then the following week, there's some wars in the park. That's a free deal there, so bring your kids out, join in, have some fun. That's on the 28th. Just a few things going on in town.
If we don't have a ticket, can we just show up?
You can show up this Friday, yes.
Yes.
Bring your senior after this, I'll be...
All right. We have a motion to accept the Department head reports.
Make a motion to accept all the Department head reports.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the Department head reports. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Claims, 1102 to 1161.
There was, the total docket of the docket was $314,360.68. Five claims, first claim was to E and B Gaming, $486,359.13. Second claim is payroll number 20, for a total of $35,197.56. The third highest is for protective coatings, total of $34,483.64. Fourth highest claim was no insurance or work minutes comp, $25,923. And the fifth largest claim was Indiana Department of Revenue over the year, which probably sales tax for electric and water, $1,764.68, for a total of $293,728.1, which is 80% of total bracket. 6 cents, sorry.
I move to accept claims 1102 through 1161.
Second. Got a motion and a second to accept claims 1102 through 1161. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That payment to E and B, we got a grant then that covered 140-some thousand of that, right?
Correct, that was one another fund, but...
Yeah.
Basically reimburse ourselves, so I can reuse it again next year.
Good? Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.